I'd like to call to order the May 19, 2015, meeting of the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners. And we will start, as always, with the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you'll join me in prayer. Thank you for Memorial Day and the chance to honor the close to 700,000 Americans who have lost their life in military service to our country. We honor these men and women whose family hold up the soldiers for military duty and together with all the potential future these brave men and women have given up to protect us, preserve our freedoms, and to fight enemies who wish to harm us and take away our way of life. This weekend, many of us will go to celebrations, cookouts, meals with our family, and just take it easy and enjoy our freedom and time off. This is good because part of what these men and women who have died fought for was our time to be with our family, to remember the fallen heroes who set up the opportunities to enjoy this day. We'll also be honoring the Bill of Rights, the U.S. Constitution, and the Declaration of Independence in a new monument adjoining this building. This is what sets the United States apart from the rest of the country, the foresight that our foremothers and forefathers have put together to envision the country we live in today. Each one of the valiant soldiers we honor this weekend loved our country and all we stand for. Help us to honor them, to remember why they paid the ultimate price, and to pray that the very few more good men and women must die for our freedoms. But we understand that that is the call of the military, and that is why we have Memorial Day. Thank you for our freedoms, our Memorial Day heroes, and the chance to reflect and honor these exceptional men and women. Amen. Our next order of business will be public comment. We will be having budget presentations from the city schools, the county schools, the district attorney's office, and the county manager, but we will not be taking official public comment and hearing on those budgets until next week. Today's the day we present them. You are welcome to talk about them, but we would ask that the extensive examination and discussions take place on June the 2nd.
Chairman Gant, we are planning on making public comment available during the hemlock agenda items, so if folks are here to speak on that, probably best to hold it for that time.
Yes. Yes, thank you, Commissioner. That's right. We're going to take up the hemlock project first on the agenda under New Business, so we will have public comment then. So while we do have public comment general, start the meeting, the better comment on that project would be when we take it up on our agenda. All right, the ethics reminder. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Commission, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which will have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact on any board member? If none, does any board member have a financial interest on any public contract that might come before us tonight? The hearing, none. There will be an obligation and duty for each county commissioner to vote on all items before us today. Public comment. The time limit for any comment to the commission is three minutes. If your time expires, you may leave any questions along with your name, address, phone number, or email with the county manager. Commissioners are not expected to comment on matters during public comment. This is your time to talk to us. Comments should be limited to subjects that are within the commission's jurisdiction or obtained upon matters that we may act. Any individual speaking during public comments should address the entire commission. Any polling of board members is inappropriate. Persons addressing the board are expected to observe the decorum of the chamber and to be respectful of everyone in the room. Any person who willfully interrupts, disturbs, or disrupts the session will be asked to leave the meeting. The commission reserves the right to deny public address on any subject previously presented to the board. Do we have any public comment tonight? Yes, sir. Mr. Yelton? We'd like to speak after Mr. Yelton. Mr. Rice? Anyone else? You will have a right to speak on the hemlock. Any folks here, when we get to that matter, and any other matter? Yes, sir.
I'm hitting my full stride. You're going to see me probably every meeting, for the good Lord's will and the creek don't rise. And I'd like to add a comment to what you said. By the way, thank you for having comment at the next meeting, because I didn't get a copy of the agenda today. I couldn't get it downloaded off the website. The staff was very nice to me, but it was too big to try to print off, so. I think your comment about the Declaration of Independence is very, very important. Constitution is very, very important. All those documents are important, but they themselves don't mean doodly squat unless we follow them. And ruling by fiat, our executive order, or the order of the governor, or the order of this board, that doesn't follow the Constitution is totally not worth anything and is against what this country was founded for. Enough said about that. I saw on TV that we gave $11 million to a brewery. Think that's the one down on the river that's got all the big tanks up and everything, and it created 130 jobs. That's $84,000 a job. And they had a representative of the company on TV, and she said, "Oh, we came to Asheville for the quality of life." Not one time was it mentioned in that report that Asheville has fantastic water. And the last time I checked, you've got to have water to make beer, ain't you? It's got to be good. That may be the reason some of them are coming here. And who's kept that water up? Taxpayers. And number two, nobody mentioned the fact that that's a brownfield site, because main auto down there was for years and years down there stripping autos, and that ground was full of dirt. And one of the things they did was bring all that dirt in to cover up that bad dirt, which what should be done at CTS, I might mention, and they did that to get it out of the floodplain. So there is more hidden there than was covered in the news report. And guess what? Everything I just mentioned to you, the taxpayers helped provide, plus the $11 million. So I think that's the reason they came here, not for the quality of life. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Yelton. Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I guess I'll just follow down on that issue about the brewery. Of course, mine goes a little different direction, but it goes to the heart of why we're here. We've got the educators here, so I know that it goes to the heart of what I'm going to talk about, and that's children. When you have incentives to bring big breweries here and little breweries and call it the quality of life, and then you have to turn around and build DSS services and school services to feed back all them billions of dollars you give out, plus more, to sustain the children that's affected by this, I think it's something that this commission needs to set up another commission to just find out what the effects of this is. The quality of life, when I grew up, was how well children were, what kind of quality of community and church life they had, how well they got along with one another, and what's happening today? The fabric of our community is going downhill with these incentives on these beer companies and other type things that are coming in here from other states and telling us it's a quality of life? No. We tolerate a lot of things in Buncombe County, and I know. I've lived here all my life. Tolerating it and saying it's a quality of life is two different things. We need to think about what quality of life is in our individual lives, as well as what the commission is calling quality of life. This don't sit too well in a community that I grew up in, because a lot of this wouldn't have been tolerated, especially from an old Baptist minister. What I would like to bring to you at the next board meeting, I'm not going to get into it right now, but there are some statistics out there that Mr. Chairman Gant knows already, because he's got his name on the letter, and it's going to shock every one of you, because it ain't what you think it is here in Buncombe County. When the county school system and our government has to support the poor kids to the degree that they do because of tourism development and other kinds of things that we are saying quality of life, we need to rethink what's happening in our community, because the very kids that we are talking about today that needs help is not getting help, because the school system can't afford to do what they need to do, and they're getting the top end kids took care of, but they're not getting the bottom end.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Ms. Baldwin. Any other speakers after Ms. Baldwin?
I just wanted to provide a little background information prior to the budget hearing in June, as well as a request. For the past two years, Buncombe County's school student enrollment has declined. At the beginning of the 2014-15 school year, Superintendent Tony Baldwin announced that BCS was down by over 500 students. The North Carolina State Legislature is making positive strides in offering parents educational choices, charter schools, online programs, and vouchers for private schools when traditional public schools are failing to meet the educational needs of children. This increased competition will hopefully force traditional public schools to raise their academic standards. The schools losing the most students to charters in Buncombe were Coontz Intermediate School, Inca Middle School, and Avery's Creek Elementary. Buncombe expects to lose an additional 172 students next year, when two of the new public charter schools will add grade levels. As you know, from last year's testing, 30 out of 39 traditional county public schools scored Cs and Ds on their school report cards, in spite of the inflated 15-point grading scale. As I mentioned, Coontz Intermediate School lost the most students to public charter schools. Coontz has gone from over 800 students in its first year of operation to 683 this year. There was no parent input in the decision to build the school, and the administration's plan was rubber stamped by the school board majority. Intermediate schools are a Band-Aid approach to overcrowding, not a long-term solution. While I was on the school board, it became apparent that the Roberson District really needed another elementary school, not a fifth, sixth-grade intermediate school. The school board should look at the possibility of converting Coontz Intermediate to an elementary school or a fourth and fifth-grade intermediate to ease Avery's Creek overcrowding. The soon-to-be constructed Inca Intermediate was not thoroughly vetted by the school board. The school board majority did not consider the impact of those two new charter schools located in the Inca District. Now, Inca Middle School has the lowest enrollment it has seen in over 15 years. While Inca Middle has brick-and-mortar capacity for 1,018 students, only 978 are currently enrolled, and that number is falling. The new intermediate school is being built in an industrial park only a stone's throw away from the public charter Franklin School of Innovation. I bring this up because the commission recently rubber stamped the $25 million loan for this project. It is my hope that more oversight and vetting of the school district's proposed operating budget will occur this time, so that is my request, that you will thoroughly research, as our Oversight Board for the county, this decision for funding, and to ensure it's focused on the classroom.
Thank you, Ms. Baldwin. Any other public comments today? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Stiles?
My name is DeeDee Stiles. I live in Swananoa. Last week I talked about, or, yeah, two weeks ago, I talked about the effect of high-end houses, the effect that has on people's property values, and I wanted to say that on the long term, if you're looking at how you want the county to develop, if somebody builds a house like that and the property values go up, then it's a lot harder for people who would like to make a development with affordable housing to acquire the land. It's also a lot more difficult for people who would like to make small truck farms to provide fresh produce to all the restaurants and farmers' markets in Buncombe County to acquire enough land to have a farm. I know a number of young farmers who would love to have a farm and carry on agriculture activities in Buncombe County, but they can't afford the land, because just one or two high-end houses runs the taxes up. And while I don't really think that you will make a zone that excludes high-end houses, I do think you need to consider some kind of protection or some kind of assistance for people who would acquire the land for low-income housing, affordable housing, or some kind of small agriculture activities to carry on in this county, because otherwise we're going to lose all of that in Buncombe County. The other thing is, I understand that there's not going to be a public comment about what I saw on the agenda about treating the hemlock trees.
No, we actually will have some public comment.
Okay, then I'll talk about that later.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Stiles. Any other public comment tonight? All righty. Then, during pre-session, we've agreed to move up the hemlock preservation project, and we're going to hear a little bit from Dr. Green about the Zugner Pool situation during her county manager's report that will precede the consent agenda. So why don't I go, I guess the best order is to go ahead and recognize Dr. Green to talk about the pool. And while she's hitting the stand, I'd like to recognize Diego is here. He is our first junior county commissioner in our history. He's got a very inspiring story, and we thank him for being here tonight. Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
And I'd just like to say, I've had the opportunity at two piano recitals to see Diego performing. He does a fabulous job. On the Zugner Pool, we have, the county schools and YMCA have formed a partnership, and we're going to fund that partnership to keep the Zugner Pool open for at least another, if not two, year, so that we can swim in it. They did an analysis to see what needed to be repaired. The YM did that, and we've made that investment to make those repairs. And so we hope to swim there until the new swim facility is built, and the county school's working on location and nature of that new swim facility. So I think it worked out really, really well.
I think we had some big news today, and another, and while I have you on the stand, from Duke Power. Would you share a little bit of that with us?
What I consider great news today, you know, there's been lots of input around coal-powered plant and the ash that goes with that, but Duke announced today that they would be investing $1.1 billion to convert, to build, really.
B with a, that's, B as in billion, not.
Yes. Lots of zeros. They will actually be building a new gas-powered facility at the current location, and once it's up and running, they will demolish the existing facility, clean up the ash, and then figure out how to use the flatland with some other alternative power. But a really big announcement, good for the community. While I think it's environmentally a good move forward, I will also tell you that investing a billion dollars in assets in the county is also a very nice boost to our tax base, too.
And they will also not be pumping any warm water into Lake Julian, which will return to the normal levels.
It will. They say it'll be the temperature of other lakes in the area.
The tower will come down about 100 feet. There'll be a new tower built, but it'll be about 100 feet lower, totally change the landscape of the area, and there will be solar, undetermined amount of solar power installed there.
Will be, and you will probably not be able to see the new facility from the I-26.
Yeah. And of course, the pollution and emission levels will be drastically reduced. Efficiency goes up to 80% compared to what it is now, and our tax base goes up by 40%. Is that the figures as you remember?
That's, I'm looking at those figures, but it didn't take me but a minute to run the property tax on a billion dollars, so it's a very nice increase for our budget.
And that'll be for everybody.
That's good for everybody.
So I want to thank Senator Apodaca, who was instrumental in making this happen from our neighboring county of Henderson, and all the Duke Power folks that worked to do this after spending money on the smokestacks that Commissioner Newman was very involved in, and so to put a $1.1 billion after doing that, and they won't be using the smokestack anymore, because it's natural gas, so. Really different.
Entirely different facility. They won't be using the current one at all.
Okay. Any more questions about either the Duke or the pool for Dr. Green? We just thank you for working on that. That's certainly important. Of course, Dr. Baldwin, we thank you for your, and school board members, we appreciate you. That's tremendous to keep that open and keep it going.
It's been a really good working relationship. Thank you.
Just have a quick comment. I was interested in having the people here, you know, what went on with the pool, and I just think it's a good collaboration between the schools and the county, and the community, and, you know, the kids involved, and, you know, the private sector, and, you know, the Y getting involved, and that is a great way to solve an issue. Of course, I'm extremely ecstatic about the Duke Power announcement, too, so it's fantastic. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so next we have adoption of the agenda. We did talk about moving up the hemlock preservation project to our first matter of new business. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda which includes passing the consent agenda that includes the Zugner Pool that Dr. Green? Motion by Commissioner Frost. Is there a second? Second by the chairman. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Then we'll follow the agenda as revised, and that puts us up to the hemlock preservation project. Commissioner Newman?
Thank you, Chairman. I've got a short presentation that I think we'll pull up in just a second, so I've got just a couple of slides about this issue, but just as a little bit of background, the item that we have on the agenda tonight is meant to propose a local initiative for Buncombe County to get involved in what is, I think, many people consider one of the most important ecological challenges that we face in the Appalachian Mountain region, which is the conservation of one of the real keystone species in this part of the world, our native hemlock trees. So let's put the slides up, if we can, and I'll just kind of walk through that, and I think it basically explains what the issue is and what the proposal is. And intent then, I think, is we'll make a motion, and if it's seconded, then we'll open it up to public comment, if that sounds good to you, Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
All right. Go ahead and advance to the next slide, please. So here in the Appalachian Mountains, we have two native hemlock trees. There's the eastern hemlock, which is the most common hemlock tree species in the Appalachian Mountains, grows from Alabama all the way up to Maine and into Canada, and is a very, one of the most prevalent species in our Appalachian forests, oftentimes growing along rivers and creeks, and plays a very, very important role in the forest ecosystems, in protection of water quality along the streams where it commonly grows. And they can live hundreds of years and reach great heights. Next slide, please. The other species of hemlock that we have here in western North Carolina is the Carolina hemlock, and it's a much more rare species, and it grows only in the southern Appalachian Mountains, primarily just within western North Carolina, and a couple of other counties and adjoining states in upstate South Carolina, and southwest Virginia, and a couple of counties in Tennessee and Georgia. But western North Carolina is probably 95% of its habitat and range. Next slide, please. So the problem that we are facing is that there has been a, there's a non-native insect that has been introduced into the Appalachian Mountains that is not from this part of the world. It's originally from Asia and was accidentally brought to the forests in the eastern United States several decades ago. And so it's a non-native insect, and so the native hemlock trees don't have any natural resistance to it, and there are no natural predators within the ecosystem that feed on it to keep its populations in check. And as a result, this hemlock wooly adelgid pest has rapidly spread, and millions of hemlock trees have already died as a result. And that is an image off of the Blue Ridge Parkway. Next slide, please. And so the ecologists and biologists and scientific community that's focused on this issue believe that most of the remaining native hemlocks in the Appalachian Mountains are likely to die off over the next couple of decades unless something is done to change this dynamic. And due to its very small population size, the Carolina hemlock is particularly susceptible to extinction, because its populations are so much more limited that it could, you know, unless we take active steps, it could literally, those populations could be extinct. Next slide, please. The hemlock adelgid was first detected in northern Virginia about three decades ago, but it has rapidly spread north to Maine and south into western North Carolina, and now also into Georgia. And this is an image, this is a picture I took of a hemlock, I think it's, I think that was in Swananoa or Montreat, and you can, people will often see these. If you look on the undersides of hemlock trees, you can see these little white things attached to the leaves, and that's the hemlock adelgids that are growing and laying eggs on the hemlock trees. Next slide, please. So there have been a number of efforts that have been undertaken over the last decade to try to take steps to protect the hemlock trees, and there are a couple of, and at this time, there are a couple of strategies that appear to show real promise in protecting the hemlocks and giving the hemlocks a good chance for surviving into the future. And many people who are actively involved in this issue believe that the most important long-term solution is to help restore ecological balance within the forest ecosystems by bringing in a beetle that's been identified in the hemlock forests of the Pacific Northwest that feeds on these hemlock adelgids there. And so there are hemlock adelgids in the Pacific Northwest, but the hemlocks there are not dying, and the belief is because the populations are kept in check by this Lyrachobius beetle, or Larry beetle, as people oftentimes refer to it in shorthand. And so in the recent years, conservation organizations, and the U.S. Forest Service and the U.S. Park Service have begun introducing these Lyrachobius beetles into hemlock groves on Forest Service land, Park Service land, other lands, and it is showing real promise in terms of helping to save the hemlock trees in the areas that it has been introduced. There are a couple of other beetles that also are, people have some hope that they might also be part of the long-term solution in terms of keeping the adelgid populations and bringing them in check. Next slide, please. And so there are lots of, you know, the lead agencies around hemlock preservation have primarily been the federal agencies, the U.S. Forest Service, the U.S. Park Service, and they've dedicated a lot of resources to this. But this is a problem that does not respect political boundaries, and so, you know, the vast majority of lands in North Carolina are not on federal lands, and so we're losing our hemlock trees outside the national forests and national parks. And so the basic proposal is for Buncombe County to get involved in helping to take responsibility for conserving our best remaining hemlock populations on our local public lands, so county-owned lands, municipally-owned parklands, schoollands here in Buncombe County, and to invest in efforts to accelerate the introduction of these Lyrachobius beetles to Buncombe County that appear to be our best hope for preserving and then hopefully restoring populations of hemlock trees. We are fortunate to have some remaining areas of true old of hemlock trees. Um, we are fortunate to have some remaining areas of true old growth um hemlock forests, including some remaining old growth Carolina hemlock groves. And so the recommendation would be to focus on preserving those best remaining Carolina hemlock groves that are, that are most endangered and irreplaceable. But we have hemlock trees throughout, you know, our towns and city parks and public parks and school lands as well. And preserving those hemlock trees is important, too. Uh, next slide, please. And so the specific, the specific request for consideration is for, um, and proposals for Buncombe County to partner with several community organizations that are actively involved in this effort, to bring in an additional 5,000 Laricobius beetles from the Pacific Northwest. Um, we have some folks who are real experts in this and have been working on this successfully uh for other, for other organizations. To partner with them, um, we believe that for an investment of $25,000, we can get at least 5,000 Laricobius beetles, which can be released in, in multiple sites throughout um public lands in Buncombe County. We are proposing that we partner with WNC Communities, which has been selected by the state of North Carolina as a lead organization in helping to coordinate efforts for hemlock conservation um at the regional level. And um, Mountain True has also been very actively involved in addressing invasive species, not just the hemlock adelgids, but other invasive species, and is doing a great job getting citizens uh involved in these efforts on a volunteer level. And they've been very helpful in, in educating me about, about the, the promising strategies around hemlock conservation. So um, next slide, please. And um, so the recommendation tonight is for Buncombe County to get involved in these efforts, working with other state agencies, federal agencies, local community groups. This is also an issue that, that, that citizens um can be involved in and need to be involved in. Um, the vast majority of hemlock trees grow on private property, and this is something that all private landowners can take steps to be involved in. So if this is, if the hemlock, uh, if hemlock conservation is something that's important to you, um, we'd encourage you to get involved in this effort, as well as, as, as our, the hope is to take some of the same steps we're taking to help preserve hemlock trees on, on private property. Uh, next slide, please. And uh, this is the last slide. And I would just say that, you know, um, the time to act on this issue is, is now. Um, you know, um, close to 100 years ago, uh, there was another non-native um fungus that was introduced into the Appalachian forests, and it ended up killing almost all of the American chestnuts throughout the eastern United States. And uh, was devastating to, to this part of the country, to western North Carolina and, and the whole Appalachian region. And to have such a, you know, one of the most prominent tree species just sort of suddenly in, en masse, uh, die off. And um, and it was a, it was very heart-wrenching to the generations of people who lived at that time to watch that happen, partly because there was nothing they could do about it. And so that's, what's happening to the hemlock tree is, is similar in a lot of ways. But the good news is that there are things we can do about protection of the hemlock. And so Buncombe County's role in this um is, uh, is, is in the big scheme of things, probably a modest one. But I think, I think we can model what the responsible activities that landowners can take on this issue and um, and play an important role in making sure that 20 years, 30 years from now, we continue to have this, uh, this great app, uh, native Appalachian tree thriving here in Buncombe County. So um, thank you for your consideration of this initiative. Um, I would like to make a motion that we give direction to the county manager to include an investment of $25,000 in the 2015, 2016 budget uh for this initiative, which would be administered by WNC Communities for the purposes outlined in the presentation.
I'll second that.
It's been a motion by Commissioner Newman, a second by Commissioner Frost. Uh, well, we did announce we will have public um comment on this. I'll ask first, does any commissioner wish to be heard before our public comment? All right. Then we'll take public comment on anyone that wants to um talk about the hemlock preservation uh project. Mr. Yelton, um, and then you'll be next. So you can come on up and just sit on the front row. Uh, Ms. Styles, and then the gentleman in the green shirt. You can come on up and just sit in the front row. Thank you.
I think as we address the hemlocks, we need to be aware of what happened with the chestnut first. The fungus that killed the chestnut, the chestnut started dying, and the Forest Service was just getting started. The chestnut was rot-resistant, termite-resistant, ant-resistant. You build the old barns out of it, they lasted forever. You could make fence posts out of them, they lasted forever. So what would, the decision was made is let's cut them all down before they die. And they did. And overseas in Europe, they didn't cut them. And guess what happened? They developed a natural immunity. And I think in this research, that is part of the study, to see if the trees will develop a natural immunity. Now, I have the hemlocks around my house. I have some neighboring properties got hemlocks, and the property owner doesn't care. They are dying. But when the chestnut died, you've got a guy down at the Forest Service that says that's the reason the oaks were prevalent here, because the oaks fill the canopy space that the chestnut left. And guess what the oak did? That created the furniture industry. So nature does change. There's a good lesson here. But there's another good lesson in that with the, this, with this hemlock, I paid $700 to have mine treated at my house, 'cause I wa, I love them. They give me a good windbreak between me and the neighbor. They can't be beat. They're not like the white pines. These idiots that's got these white pines are just waiting for catastrophe with no end hits them, 'cause they ain't got no roots. If you got them around your house, Dave, you better get them out of there. So I love those things. But I paid $700 to treat them. And what I have done the last three to four years is when I see the little adelgid come on there, I take soap and I spray it with soap. And guess what? They disappear in the next rain. The soap kills the eggs. So for those that don't have, so that's something that needs to be talked about a little bit. And I would like to work with this group because they're more than welcome to come to my trees and more than welcome to wash me spray soap on them, 'cause right now I'm trying to figure out how to get it to the top of the trees. Because that's going to be the only problem. And if you treat them, well, each tree individually, and you can't do that in the forest. So please keep them alive and let them build a natural immunity, 'cause that's the only real solution.
Thank you, Mr. Yel. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Styles. And then we'll hear from a gentleman in the green shirt. Anybody want to speak after the gentleman in the green shirt? Like the man with the big yellow hat or something. Sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Styles.
Uh, like the man before me, we also have a number of very old hemlock trees around our house. And we have had our trees also treated. One of the things that I noticed when we treated our mature trees, that those younger trees that have come up in the woods behind our house, once we treated our grown trees and got rid of the adelgids on those trees, it cut down the, apparently cut down the reservoir of, of adelgids to infect the other trees. And we had less problem with infection, of infection of the trees uh in the woods behind our house, once we treated our trees. Right now, our trees have about run out of their time of treatment. We might have to treat them again. But when I investigated using the insects to eat them, the man who was raising them down in O'for, the little insects that eat the adelgids, he said, if we treated our trees, we would have to wait two years to introduce the insects that eat them, because they would eat the adelgids who had eaten the sap of the infect, of the treated trees. And that would poison the insects that were eating the adelgids. So that's one of the issues that you'll have to look at, is what trees have been treated, and how long ago they've been treated, and whether or not the insects that you buy are, and they're not cheap. They're, they're cheaper than they used to be, 50 cents a piece, those little bugs. But um, whether you're gonna, whether they're gonna die from eating adelgids off of trees that have already been treated. The other thing that we found out at that time is that if you fertilize your trees, it helps them be more resistant to the adelgids. But I think it's really important to maintain as many of the hemlock trees as we can, because they do provide shade for all the streams that feed the rivers. So that when the water gets to the river, it's cold enough to support the kind of fish communities and the kind of food that the fish would feed on. If the water is exposed to too much sunlight, even in the wintertime, where the deciduous trees use, that lose their leaves, then that water is too warm to uh maintain the kind of environment that maintains the food that the trout eat. So it's real, it's a complicated process, and very, very important. And I do hope that the county does everything they can to protect the trees in the county and to help the homeowners understand what they can do to protect, to help protect the trees, 'cause it's not just the ones on your property. It spreads everywhere. And if you treat yours, that helps, that helps a lot, to cut down on the reservoir of insects to be, infect other trees.
Thank you, G. Uh, yes, sir. Anybody want to speak after this gentleman? Okay. Uh, you'll be next, in black shirt, and you'll be after him. He'll be after you. Go ahead, sir.
Well, I'd like to thank the commissioners, and especially Commissioner Newman, for bringing this issue before us. Uh, my name is Josh Kelly, and I'm a biologist with Mountain True. Um, Brownie mentioned our work with uh non-native species and trying to preserve our, our native ecosystems in his presentation. And Commissioner Newman did a great job of laying out the issue. You know, that's true that we've lost millions of hemlock trees across the region. And it's true that we are probably going to continue to lose some more. And while I deeply admire and respect Ms. Styles, I do want to correct a couple of things that she said. First, um, treating hemlock trees is not an impediment towards introducing beetles. You cannot introduce beetles on a treated tree because there's no food for them there. But there's no danger to beetles flying over to a tree that's been treated. Uh, the research from University of Tennessee has proven that you can chemically treat one tree, introduce beetles to an adjacent tree, and have no problems. And secondly, please, if anyone has hemlocks, do not fertilize them. If you fertilize them, you're fertilizing the adelgids. The adelgids only reproduce more with fertilizing. You need to get your, your trees healthy before fertilizing them. So that's just a word of caution. Also, for any landowners in Buncombe County, uh, I advise you to treat your trees. Um, you can treat your, an individual tree for $20, and it might cost you hundreds of dollars to remove the tree, uh, to remove the danger from your house when the tree dies. Um, and so this is a very forward-looking proposal. While chemical treatment is the only way to guarantee an individual tree is going to survive, introducing this, this predator-prey relationship that Commissioner Newman was talking about, this ecological balance, is the bridge to the future. Chemical treatment is not viable forever. This is a stopgap that we're using right now to take us into the future and try to save some of the mature trees that we have to be the seed source for future generations. And these Larico, Laricobius nigroginus beetles, out of all six species of insect that have been approved by the USDA to uh try to control adelgids, seem to be the most promising. These beetles are native to North America. They're easy to collect in the Pacific Northwest, and they are very fertile. They produce about 400 beetles per female. And they'll fly all over the county. So while you're helping to protect public land on the county, you'll be protecting, hopefully, other property owners as well. And I'll just try to end it on a, a little bit of a philosophical note, that um, you know, hemlocks are indeed majestic and beautiful trees. They're a gift from the Creator to us. And I hope that through this, these efforts, we can pass these uh important trees on to the future generations. And so I really appreciate the commissioners for even considering this item, and I really hope that it, it passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Uh, yes, ma'am, we'll go. And then we'll go with the gentleman in front.
Hello. My name is Linda Lamp. I'm with WNC Communities. Uh, I, I also want to express gratitude on behalf of the hemlocks in Buncombe County for your consideration uh in putting for, forth funds for the Larry beetle. Uh, my reason for coming up here is I wanted to let you know that um, the Commissioner of Agriculture and the Department of Agriculture, through TBA Settlement Funds, of course, gifted to WNC Communities, has given us the opportunity last year to start the Hemlock Restoration Initiative for seven town, 17 county region. I am delighted to say they put additional funds into this effort uh in 2015, so that we will be able to hire a full-time person to be able to coordinate a lot of the great efforts uh that are going on with chemical application, uh, with the predator beetles, and also with an opportunity that hasn't been discussed yet uh in, in today's venue, is actually breeding pest resistance into some of our hemlocks, which is being worked on by NC State. Uh, but my objective was just to make sure that I said thank you very much for your work and your effort and your concern for the hemlocks. Uh, they definitely are majestic and mean a lot to the landscape, not only in Buncombe County, but throughout the mountains of western North Carolina. And they are worthy to be preserved. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lamb. Yes, sir.
My name is John Johnson, and uh, I'm a resident of Montreat, and uh, want to say that we were thrilled to hear that this commission was considering this proposal. Uh, I'd like to say amen to all the speakers who have talked about how majestic the hemlocks are, and what a great part they play in the forest and the whole atmosphere of this section of Appalachia. Uh, the forest would not be the same without the hemlock. And it's also true that these hemlocks are dying. Chemical treatments at homes and individual can keep a tree alive, but they have little impact on the forest where the expense is far too great and far too repetitive. And when you heard the price of what one gentleman paid for his tree, you understand how that will never work in the forest as a whole. I think it would be well, uh, if I could, just to comment about the fact that there is a great success story. Uh, Dr. Richard McDonald of, who studies this issue and promoted the idea of bringing the beetles from the western part of our country, where there are hemlocks, and they are healthy, and they live, and can be seen, to fight the woolly adelgid in the east. It turns out that they keep them in line in the west. We just don't have them in the east. And uh, that was tried, starting in 2003, at the Grandfather Country Club, or Golf Club, in Linville. And for about three years, it was not clear that it'd work or not. But as it turned out, uh, after about three years, they did grow and did expand, and the beetles did take up more territory. And it wasn't just there and their 1,100 acres and their magnificent trees. They didn't know the boundaries. They spread throughout Avery County, and now encompass an area of something like 20-mile radius. Now, if Buncombe County could have two or three of these spots and spread in the 20-mile radius, we would impact not, not just Buncombe County, but also all of western North Carolina. Speaking on behalf of Montreat, we have a volunteer group. We've taken some of the training that was talked about. We have a fundraiser to do chemicals. We want to switch it to fundraiser to do beetles. And if you provide us with, or elect to, we will magnify your money and put more into it. And we thank you for the opportunity, and we think you're farsighted in saving what we feel is a great asset for these mountains.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any other public comment on this preservation? Yes, sir,
Certainly I liked hemlocks. I was raised on a farm, and we, we loved all the trees, not just the hemlock. When the big snow come, you wanted to get under them. Things had, like an old mother hen, they'd just give you a place you could get under and dry out. Uh, I think there's a bigger issue here that I think the commission needs to look at. Sometimes we get so single-focused that we don't see the forest for the trees. So when you're talking about the hemlock, that is uh something precious, absolutely. But when I go to Walmart, Kmart, just about any store I go to, I see people coming out with bags of chemicals, and I'm just wondering, where in the world are they going? And then when I go down the road and I see them with that little spray in the hand, nothing on their face or anything else, and spraying trees, bushes, and I say, where did they get their lessons at and what to do? We're talking about Roundup. If you read what's on these things, it will just blow your mind what a little dab will do to a lot of uh vegetation or anything else. Not only that, but it gets into your drinking water. So rather than focusing just on, let's have a school lesson, let's get kids interested in forestry, for sure. But more so, what can they do around the house? My concern is much bigger than the hemlock. You know, Mr. Hugh Morton tried his best to preserve Grandfather Mountain in a way, in the 50s, he built the big bridge to draw tourists. Well, when you look at what he did, he also brought tourists in to see the shame of what industry had done to the mountains. And they had brought this acid rain in from the Ohio Valley, going on through in to Kentucky. And this acid rain was governed by Sammy now. And uh, I'm glad to see his coal plant leaving. But then I think, what next? But I think we need to look at a larger picture. what next? But I think we need to look at a larger picture than just this one tree. I think we need to form some kind of commission to look and study the effects of all these chemicals that these stores are selling and home uses being used. What are they killing that we're going to have on the agenda again later that we're killing ourselves? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Anyone else like to be heard on the hemlock preservation project proposal? Yes, sir, Mr. Glazner.
I'll be brief. Charlie Glazner, I have 50 white pine trees, Mr. Yelton, and three hemlocks. And I treated those myself. It was about $50 for the three. It was very effective. That was about three years ago. But I want to say that I do like the idea of investing in the beetle project, but also promoting educationally so that we, as citizens, can know that we do have some options, and they're reasonably, reasonable options for the trees on our own property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glazner. Any other public comment? If not, any discussion or comments by commissioners?
Yeah, I've got a couple of comments. One is, I lost two large hemlocks on my daughter's property, and it was back when the cost was just tremendous to take care of it. So to hear that that price is coming down is news, that we do need to get out to the public and the public to hear. But my understanding is that 100% of this cost will be going to the project costs, not to labor, but going to buy, to buy these beetles. I think it's an efficient way to do it. I think it's a great, you know, test to see in Buncombe County how it works, you know, and to measure it. I challenge us to measure this so that we'll know the effects of it. I am one that will always side on investing in being a good stewardship to what God has provided for our eyes-to-behold in this county. And so, for those reasons, I'll be supporting this tonight.
Any other comments?
Well, I agree with the vice chair. I think that, you know, we have investments. We talk a lot about bricks and mortar and libraries and schools, and they're critical. But we also have investment in our natural resources, and we have to acknowledge that. That is a big part of who we are, who we want to be, who we want our children and grandchildren to be, enjoy, as we're long gone. So, thanks. Great. Commend Commissioner Newman for bringing this to us and certainly support this. Any other comments?
I would just like to say that I think this is a good solution to a very real problem. So I'm happy to support this.
Any other comments?
Just one last comment. Just to make sure we're 100% clear. So the proposal, you know, the PowerPoint presentation, one of the points I made in there, I don't think I said out loud, but, you know, this is going to be a multi-year effort. This isn't going to be something that we're going to solve in a year. The proposal's not for recurring funding for this initiative. It's a one-year, you know, investment in this year's budget. And I concur with Commissioner Belcher that we need to monitor the results, although we probably also need to be cautious in not, in recognizing that we may not know the full benefits for several years. But I think we, you know, this, I think, you know, I look at this as Buncombe County getting involved, partnering with other agencies. We should certainly evaluate when we're, you know, a year out from it, whether we need to, what we want to do as a longer-term strategy. So, but we're not asking for commitment in future years, but I think realistically, we do need to, this is not an issue that will go away in a single year. So, thank you all for your consideration of this, and thanks for everyone who came out tonight and shared additional insights into it. It's obviously an issue that, that a lot of people really care about. So, thanks to everyone.
Thank you. Any other comments?
The only thing I would say is that I know, Kathy, your brain's probably already working over there in terms of kind of the PR facet of this, too, and how we can kind of maybe work with our partner agencies as well as others to both educate the public on what they can do, but also get people excited. Because clearly, I mean, I don't, I don't know that I've ever sat through an agenda item where everybody was supportive. So this is clearly something that a lot of people, it crosses a lot of boundaries, and we want to amplify that energy and good thinking. So whatever we can do at Buncombe County to promote it, it'd be great.
Okay, anything else?
One more.
Yes, sir.
I'm proud that there are 17 counties that ag, agriculture, Truaxler and them is involved with in this issue, and WNC, Mountain True, anybody that wants to get in the process, I think should be in, but I'll be supporting this.
Any other comments? If not, we'll go ahead and call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Then the hemlock preservation project has been passed by seven to zero vote. Thank you. Next, we'll have, thank you. Next, we'll have the presentation of the county school budget request, and we'll hear from Dr. Tony Baldwin. I'd also like to recognize Chairman Ann Franklin is here, and Chip is also here. Thank you both for your service on the school.
First thing I want to do is just applaud the commissioners for recognizing Diego as an honorary commissioner. I have met him on several occasions, and I'll tell you, it's, I don't know if I've ever met as well-mannered a young man as Diego. And Diego, we talk a lot about STEM education and science. Man, did you get a wonderful science education just a few minutes ago. About environmental science and history and importance of sustainability. So I hope you were taking notes, and you share with some of those classmates tomorrow, okay? I want to thank the commissioners for allowing me to personally come and present our budget request to you. I'm going to be working off of a PowerPoint, giving you paper copies. It might be a little bit easier to see some of the numbers on there. The first five slides I want to talk about tonight are representations of just the big-picture budget for Buncombe County schools. And I think there's also going to be analogies for Dr. Pam Baldwin and Asheville City Schools, as both of us, for the most part, have a very similar model. The first slide that I've provided is a multi-year analysis of the revenue sources that we depend upon for our school budget, and primarily three sources: state, local, and federal. And what I think is interesting, when you look at the comparisons beginning 2010 to 11, and going to 2013, 14, what you see is a, early on, is a significant percentage of dependency on federal funding. And I think we all know what occurred 2009, 10, what we were facing at that time. And that's when the cavalry rode in with federal funding. And that was in the stimulus, the stabilization, race to the top funds. And as these years have gone on, you see where the federal funding has declined. The cavalry's come in, and now the cavalry is retreating. And as they retreat, we become more and more dependent up on our local funding. The next slide is more current. It's the 2014, 15 analysis. And on that particular slide, 2007, the federal funding was at 7%. And if you look currently, it has moved down to 8%. But from an impact standpoint for Buncombe County schools, and really, schools across this entire state, 2010 and 11, the first year that we showed the particular slide on, it peaked at 20%. So again, that gradual decline in federal funding, and as the federal funding leaves, it leaves certain holes in that budget that we greatly depend upon coming to you as commissioners to assist with. Next slide is just a bar slide, a little bit better picture, maybe, for individuals. Again, showing that decline in federal fund, and that slide increase in local funding. And for the most part, the state funding on the recurring basis, local as well, it's remained fairly, fairly stable. Again, we took some significant hits early on in the budget crisis from the state, but it's gradually, gradually moving upward. The next slide, I hope, is a feel-good slide for this Board of Commissioners. I'm going to first move, again, this is 2013, 14. This was the most recent data that we had. And this looks at state rank. Where does Buncombe County fall when you look at the federal funds, the state funds, and the local funds? And this is based upon per pupil expenditures. So if you look all the way to the right, 2013, 14, you'll see that the rank, and there's 115 school systems in the state of North Carolina, and from highest to lowest, we ranked 80th when you combine the federal, state, and local. When you look across to your left, you'll see that the state funding rank, again, this is per pupil expenditures, in Buncombe County, we ranked 91st out of 115 school systems. When you look at the federal funding, we ranked even lower, 95th out of the state in terms of federal funds and per pupil expenditure. But I think where this Board of Commissioners can feel good, although I say feel good, our rank is 30th. We'd love to see that 20th, and we'd be excited if it moved into the 20s. But 30th out of 115, when you look at that comparison with state and federal funds, I really think what that demonstrates is the historical tradition of this Board of Commissioners to support both the Buncombe County's and Asheville City's school systems. Next slide. I couldn't talk about the budget without making sure that, and we do this when we do these public presentations, we're going to make sure the public understands that we are still, in our school system, reeling from personnel reductions that started all the way back 2009, 2010. And over this six-year period of time, we are 167 less positions. Now, I can tell you this, and you've heard me come before this Board of Commissioners before each year, and saying that our first priority in any type of budget situation where we're facing cuts is to look at non-human-type cuts. And I think we can demonstrate over that six-year period of time that we have done that. However, there's only so much cutting in that area. And now you get into personnel resources. But what we have tried to do is not cut people. And you may recall teaching assistance. For the last three years, I can tell you that the maintenance of teaching assistance in Buncombe County schools is a direct result of the flexibility that the county manager and you, as a Board of Commissioners, gave us with funds. But where we had to cut positions, we cut across the board in all categories, and we made sure if a position was cut, we did everything possible that that particular person ended back up in the system. Maybe not in the same position, but in a position. And I think we've been very successful at that. Next slide. I think Dr. Pam Baldwin will share these concerns, but I need to be upfront with you, the difficulty of coming to you on the timeline with these budget requests. We're required by state law to present this by May the 15th. We presented it to the county manager, I think both of us did, on May the 12th. Both of us just had our eyes on the state House budget essentially last night. So we have staff still working back there. I can tell you, because I've gotten about six texts from them, still trying to decipher and go through that budget to determine what is the impact of the House budget. So that timeline is extremely difficult, because what's presented in front of you is reflective of the only really document that we had in front of us, which was the governor's budget. As you're aware, there's four key components to budget models in the state of North Carolina relative to schools. And the first is the governor's budget. The second is either the House or the Senate. Then the latter is provided. And the most important one, we probably will not see until some point in time in July, and Dr. King, I think this will affect you too at AB Tech, and that is the negotiated finalized budget. Let me give you two examples, quick examples. We know that the governor's budget, for example, did not reflect any type of assistance with driver's education. Now, let me tell you the local impact on that. I know David, I know several of you have sons and daughters that have gone through driver's education, and you know how valuable that is. Currently, we are charging our parents $50 per student for the driver's education training. If this funding is not provided, then that figure is going to be somewhere around $250. We believe that we will have families in Buncombe County, and I think that's probably true in Asheville City as well, that will have great difficulty finding that particular funding. And I, for one, approaching 60 years old, don't want to be driving down the road with someone without driver's education, because I have enough trouble driving myself. That's one example. The second one is the, when we looked at the House budget, there's a 2% salary bump across the board, classified and certified. That's not reflected in what we've provided to you. We are used to an April surprise. But in the school business, the April surprise over the last six years has not been a good one. So thankfully, we love to see a positive April surprise, but in terms of the timeline providing to you what we believe our needs are, it's very difficult because of these particular models not being in place yet. The second is unfunded mandates. And I know that's not new to you. Let me give you one example. We have House Bill 44, which is transition to digital learning in schools. And I'm just going to read. That became essentially law in 2013 from the General Assembly. "It is the intent of the General Assembly to transition from funding from textbooks, both traditional and digital, to funding for digital materials, including textbooks, devices, and instructional resources, to provide educational resources that remain current, aligned with curriculum, and effective for all learners by 2017, 18." Now, that's, as far as I read, that's a mandate. I did, was pleased to see in the House budget that there is at least some intent to fund some of those areas. It was not with the governor's budget. But what you're going to have tonight in front of you is a request from Buncombe County Schools for a soft match of $750,000. Let me tell you what that represents. That's our three-by-three initiative. Over the next three years, to meet this mandate, we're talking about three grades in each of those years, beginning with fourth, fifth, and sixth grade, to move to a one-to-one initiative with devices. I fully support the direction that the General Assembly has gone. I've got five grandchildren now. They were all born in the digital age. I think it is our responsibility to educate them effectively for the digital, global environment that they are going to, when they cross our stages at graduation, they're going to step into. One of the great benefits of the Discovery Academy has been the connections with our advanced manufacturers. Every single one, to a T, has said, "We need for your graduates to be STEM savvy." I wouldn't come to you if I didn't believe 100% my heart this is the direction we need to go. I will also tell you that we have, for the past four years, in our capital outlay process, we have dedicated almost a quarter of those funds to technology, because we believe it is that important. This past year, we dedicated $1 million to this particular effort. But in order to see it come to a whole for all three grades in year one, we need your help. This is one of those things, I can promise you, I've sat in way too many meetings over the past seven years, that we can sit there and we can continue to argue, "Well, you know, if we waited one more year..." Each one of you have a device in front of you. There could be an argument that if you just waited one more year, that's probably going to be $50 less, or maybe $100 less. We could have that argument for three more decades. It is time. It is time for both of our school systems to recognize that our students need this in order to be successful for the career pathway that's ahead of them. Again, unfunded mandate. Loss of federal support funds, we're coming to you. Again, as I've shown in those particular slides, what has left a void is six positions. They serve the entire They serve the entire county. They are considered to be lead teachers, and the actual term is coaches. And I want to be careful about that, because I'm an old athletic basketball coach. This is not Roy Williams in basketball coach. These are instructional academic coaches. They sit down with teachers, principals, they take data. They are extremely valuable. We need to maintain them in our system. Equity across districts. We're very proud of our arts program. One of the most successful programs we have in Buncombe County is our strings. In fact, I think two of you, I actually saw at a concert that involved our strings performance. We have wonderful string programs in five of our six districts. Ms. Frost, we don't have one in the Owen District. We need one. One of the most frustrating things for me as superintendent is the size of our school system, 12th largest. And we have wonderful pilots. We have wonderful things going on. My challenge is, and I need your help, is how do I ensure that where we have these successful programs, just because someone lives in the Owen District doesn't mean that they don't have access to them? So this is a request I'm making that impacts the equity across the districts. Next slide. And what I've also requested is pretty standard. We have several standard items. I think there's actually 14 specific items. The retirement, health insurance, every single year, it goes up. You see this across the board, not just in education. Teacher pay increase and principal pay increase, that was directly off of the governor's budget model. Again, that was the best resource that we had in front of us. It is not unusual for us to come to ask your assistance, because if a state increase occurs with any of our salaried employees, what it means is twofold. Approximately 12% of our employees across Buncombe County schools are paid out of local funds. State funds simply don't encompass all the teachers that we need in all the areas. So we need help from you with local funds. When an increase from the state occurs for state employees, I think it's fair for those local employees to receive that equitable amount. The other aspect is the local salary supplement. And let me tell you, you talk about investments, and yeah, I'm biased, but I can tell you what's given us a competitive advantage, and I think Dr. Pam Baldwin would say the same thing, are those local supplements. As you see teacher education programs across the state drop in numbers by 50%, it is extremely important that we maintain salary ranges that will attract them. So those are four fairly standard categories. Three initiative areas that we have had now in place for five years, global education. Again, I could stand here for a solid hour and talk to you about the importance of making sure each and every one of our students in the Buncombe County school system truly has an education that recognizes the importance of global cultures and living in a global world, because we are there now. Dual language and splash, again, this is a, splash is a Spanish immersion classroom that we have. Dual language, we have in four other districts. We have only one in each of those districts. We need to maintain them. This is simple maintenance. This isn't trying to expand. Graduation initiative, you've heard Bill Murdock and Evelyn come in and do a presentation to you. You know the importance, and you also know the success of that program. They continue to have calls from all over the state about that partnership, similar to the YMCA partnership with Buncombe County Schools. Evelyn has been an incredible partner for both us and Asheville City. College credit access. If you have students currently in any school system, I think the real positive trend that I am seeing, and I thank goodness we're seeing this, is that more and more opportunities are being made available for students to gain college credit access during the secondary schools. Now, why is that important? If you are a parent sitting there, reach back and fill your wallet or reach your pocketbook, because it's huge. Second, what it does in terms of preparing them to be more stable and better able to enter that college environment, and I think Dr. King would echo this as well, because it's, a lot of this is through the partnership with AB Tech, this is extremely important. Those AP classes, as we enter, for the last six years, it has been the last decision we have made personnel-wise in terms of putting those AP teachers in those classrooms. We need to stop that. We've got to stabilize this. It's just too important. We've got waiting lists from parents and students wanting to be in these classes, along with expanding the partnerships with our community college and colleges. Technology, I talked to you about the three-by-three device initiative. This is just absolutely huge. And we are ready, by the way. You might also recall that the local legislature allowed us to utilize some undesignated lottery funding toward technology. I think what we did was smart. We put it in infrastructure. At the end of this school year, our infrastructure will be second to none in the state, so we are ready for those devices. Where systems have failed, because others have gone before us, is where the infrastructure wasn't in place, or the professional development wasn't in place. Next slide. And you see, it's just a list of the operational budget requests. I think I've covered all of those. I did want to make sure to reference the driver's education. And I will tell you that the House budget did reflect that the driver's ed funding was there, but once again, we don't know. It still goes to the Senate. I understand there's still negotiations. We've not yet seen the finalized House version. Evidently, there's quite a bit of discussion going on in chambers. And then, once that occurs, we've still got the Senate, and then it's all negotiated. I want to leave you with one last slide, and that is what we believe are three capital facility challenges. The first one, I just want to thank you for your support. If you ever walked through Inca Middle School, I was here before, we talked about this, Mr. Belcher has walked through that building, I think you understand very clearly why this intermediate school was needed. And I can tell you from the standpoint of being out in the Inca District and parents coming up to me, and they say, "Thank you, thank you," and I'll say, "No, you need to thank our commissioners." We're on schedule. That's the good news. In fact, I'm not going to say any more than that, because I'll jinx something. But we are on schedule, so we feel very good about that. I do want to reference Community High School. I know a few of you had an opportunity to walk through there. And what I'm going to say about the facility, I'm going to preface by saying it reflects, it has no negative reflection whatsoever of what goes on in that building. If you want to step in a learning environment where lives are saved, where miracles occur, go to Community High School. Our Asheville school system has the equivalent. It's incredible, again, the lives that are saved. And we talk about dropout prevention. But the facility is old. It is the oldest building in our school system. It was actually built 1923. And that building has stood there. It also serves to help us in some other areas with childcare. That's extremely important. So we are looking at what to do with that particular building. And you can see the two options that we're considering is essentially keeping that. It's a historical building. It was the old Swanonoa High School. And, you know, I drive by and I see Biltmore School, and I think, you know, what a wonderful tribute to those families that have roots that went through Biltmore to still see that building up. So a lot of questions, but we are looking at that, because we do need to give them some relief. That is a great concern. And I want to point out, we're trying to look at growth patterns across the county. I know there was a reference earlier to numbers, and I'm not going to get into that. I would just encourage you to actually go back. We're very transparent with numbers, and actually look at those numbers yourself, and I'll leave it at that. The Robertson District growth has us concerned, and primarily at Avery's Creek. And the reason is, we have 484 projected housing units. Now, what I need to add on to that, that I think puts a little bit more relevancy to it, is those are permitted housing projects. So it's not just on the draft somewhere. Those have already been permitted. A number of them are apartment complexes, so we're seeing tremendous growth in that area. It is double any other district in Buncombe County, school district in Buncombe County. So those are three capital facility challenges that we have. With that, again, I certainly appreciate you giving me an opportunity just to be here and to take up some of your valuable time.
Thank you, Dr. Baldwin. Any questions? We're going to have a public hearing on this budget next meeting, but any questions before we do that?
I actually have a few. Thank you. That was a great presentation, and it makes everything really clear. And I'll start at the end. I can't echo how extraordinary I think the community school is. The faculty, everybody I've met there, they are champions. I've had the pleasure of going out there on a number of occasions, and great to see a new building, because, I mean, it's sad now, the mother-baby program is there, and as the mothers get further along in their pregnancy, there's no elevator, so it creates problems. So great to see that it's happening. I did have a question. In the budget, it seems like for years, it's always been the same allocation in a separate item. And while not advocating that we spend more money, but it seems, you know, they're losing race atop money as the other schools are. I don't understand why that number's always stayed the same.
Well, I don't know if I have a good answer for that. I think the priorities, you know, will change from year to year. And I'm not saying this to be politically correct either, because I'm not very much of a politically correct guy. But I do think that, as you look at what we've presented to this board, we've been very true in terms of, these are our needs, and we don't try to surpass those.
I just, it seems, you know, just going back 10, 12 years, it's always stayed the same number, and where everything else is going up, this number stays the same. And so I don't mean to put anybody on the spot, I just don't understand why.
And again, not to be flippant, but I might have to ask to come back to talk with you in July, once we see the finalized budget, if the direction continues to move. I think we've been able to read the crystal ball fairly well. This is a very different year. I just can't recall a year that I've served in the central office that we've not had at least one of those state budgets in front of us before we brought a presentation to you. Because if we know two out of those three models are similar, it's a much better, so we, you know, again, we may be presenting something that is low.
No, I appreciate that. My question was specifically how the community school always stays the same amount.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah.
I may have to ask Dr. Green on that one. I think that's something we really haven't. It's been the same figure that's been brought to the commissioners.
You know, I was just sitting here going through this. I've done 22 budgets. It's been the $276,000 each time. I'm not sure if we just don't put the full cost associated with the teachers and everything in that. And we did have a discussion that we should actually record total cost for that facility as opposed just to the $276.
It'd just be easier to understand.
Right. I misunderstood your question, I'm sorry.
And I even wonder why we pull it out separately anyway.
What?
I wonder why we even pull it out separately anyway.
I don't understand that either, why it's a separate, yeah.
We can fix it.
All right. Any other questions before we adjourn for our public hearing on next meeting and we take up our other presentations?
So I just kind of, just one question. If this gets us too much in the weeds, just say weeds. But, so the digital devices, I heard you say that they would be utilized for content in textbooks, and I think there was something else. So what's the difference between content and textbooks? Or, I mean, I guess, I mean, I guess I would think...
I think they're separate. When you're talking digital textbook, you know, you can, you've got Kindle format. You also have digital textbooks in the form of a DVD-type device that can be upgraded. And the advantage is, when you receive a brand-new textbook, I think we all know this, you know, it's already five years out of date. So this allows that updated. The digital devices themselves are going to be used for just a myriad of uses. Research is only one of those. We're talking about one-to-one devices. And K through 3, the reason that we opted to begin grade 4 is, K through 3 has become, for our system, and it may be similar, pretty much Apple Land, because you're seeing a lot of the iPads. And there's a reason for that when you're looking at that particular age. But what we see constantly, when we talk to business people, when we're out in this business world, they're saying, "No, it is a Microsoft platform. It is the Windows platform that we need to make sure that our students are moving into." So there is some age differentiation to it.
I got you. I just, I just kind of, I mean, I think the beauty and the excitement for me in terms of thinking about digital content is that ability to be current and to be up to date.
Absolutely.
But if it's like, if it's like I downloaded a book, that's, that would be dated too. So I just was trying to tease out that differentiation, if that makes any sense.
We're still really looking at guidance from the state. I mean, this is a mandate that came from them, so, you know, our DPI is involved in a lot of working with a lot of vendors, so we're still waiting to see what, but we want to be prepared for this. I mean, I do believe this is the right thing to do, but again, it takes funds to make this happen.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you, Dr. Baldwin. Thank you, Chairman Franklin. Thank you, Mr. Craig, for being here. Thank you for service on the school board. Next, we're going to hear from Dr. Pam Baldwin, city school budget. And thank Charlie Glazner for being here, schools. Don't see any school board, city school folks here. Thank you for their service. Do we, we have a, okay, if we have any members, I'm sorry if I missed.
That's okay. We'd like to thank our CFO, Donna Watson, and Charlie Glazner, our communications officer, for being here. And thank you for allowing me time to present. So Tony did a wonderful job of covering the history and the budget for the state, and so I will not repeat all of what he said, except that they are challenges for us as well, as you can imagine. And so as we move through and decide what the needs are for Asheville City schools, we want to first begin with what most of you already know, which is just who we are. So we currently have nine schools and about 4,300 students, and a very diverse population. What's interesting is, unlike a lot of districts across the state, we are growing and have been for a number of years. We think some of that, a lot of that is due to the West Asheville growth, but we also have a great school system, and I believe that people like to come to Asheville to attend school. So I'd like to believe that. And so we are excited about the growth, but as you can imagine, it brings great opportunity and some challenges as well. So as we work through our new strategic plan that we're actually creating right now, we really focused in on three areas, one of which is early childhood, which we all know is very important, especially to those students that do not have an opportunity before five years old to attend an organized, structured learning environment. The other is academic achievement, which is obviously why we're all there, to make sure that our students are able to read and to problem-solve, et cetera. And then, of course, that area of whole child, which our community believes, and we believe as well, is a very important component, and sometimes it's difficult to measure and difficult to address. We define whole child as that resiliency, as well as adaptation and success. And so we look for areas such as social and emotional support, mental health, as well as health and nutrition, and the opportunity to deliver different structures within our buildings to meet the needs of all of our students. I want to thank our county commissioners. I have been in four other districts in this state, and I can tell you that we are very fortunate to be here and to be appreciated like we are by our commissioners and our community. It is obvious, not only in what you do for us, but also in the interactions that we have on a daily basis. And so one example is that our commission was voted Commissioner of the Year, a joint nomination by Buncombe County Schools and Asheville City Schools, and one well-deserved. So we appreciate you. Some examples are the support you show for our... Some examples are the support you show for our teachers, our new facilities, which I'll show in just a second, that we're very excited about, great financial support, and the representation of all of you at all of our special events. And we really appreciate that. Again, and not to say anything bad about other districts, but I've been in several others and I can tell you that you are second to none. Amazing job and we appreciate it. And again, a thank you to our previous fiscal year, as well as what everybody loves to talk about, our new facilities. So, our Isaac Dixon, our $22.8 million project that we appreciate so much, your support in, as well as our middle school, $40.9 million project, both of which we hope to open August 2016. So, exciting. They are kind of on time. And we are excited to be able to open those for our students and the support of our community has been tremendous. Onto our request. So, our request currently, when we look at our projected change for supplemental and sales tax, we have a new funding, a net funding change of a little over $604,000. And then, of course, our request includes some of, or most of which Buncombe County Schools has also talked about, which is our salary increase from $33,000 minimum to $35 starting for our teachers. As Dr. Baldwin, Tony Baldwin, indicated, much of our local-funded teachers are that zero-to-four-year band, and that's where that increase for salary is coming from. And so, therefore, you'll see in our request a $339,000 increase because of benefits and In addition to the request for our local funding, we have some of the same challenges with driver's education. I echo what Dr. Baldwin indicated about being sure that we're on the road with students that have been through that training. And that estimate is about $73,000. In addition to what we all know is most important, our human resources, our teacher assistance and being able to keep those wonderful employees in our classrooms supporting students. And lastly, again, Dr. Baldwin mentioned, our home-based learning management system, also known as Canvas, which allows us to do many things, one of which is curriculum support, but also the management of student data and teacher data as well. We are fortunate, again, to have two new buildings right now that are being worked on, but we also have some capital needs as well. Our beautiful campus, Asheville High School, is, looks wonderful until you start digging a little deeper into the analysis and find that there are some structural issues. And so, we are working on an analysis to see what those issues are, from the roof to our actual stonework. And we know that that's going to be our capital request that we need later on, but we want to make sure that we pinpoint exactly the needs and prioritize those needs, so that we are proactive in making sure that we address the actual repairs that need to happen on that campus. That building, again, is beautiful, but it was built in 1929. So, again, just the facility that we want to make sure we continue to, are able to utilize. And so, the last kind of number on the screen is our early childhood initiative. And again, I spoke about this before, and as you all know, research indicates that the best way to close the achievement gap and to address the needs of students is to get them in your buildings as early as possible. And so, we believe the way to do that is to expand our preschool opportunity. We are fortunate enough to have a freestanding preschool building. We believe that expanding those classrooms into our actual elementary schools is the next move in our district to address the needs of our students and our community. And so, therefore, we are looking to expand first to Hall Fletcher Elementary School. That classroom is already full, by the way. We're excited about the recruitment efforts of Dr. Gordon Grant, and we would like to expand those into the other schools as well, to begin our new strategic plan, which involves many elements, one of which is the early childhood, but others are to address the growth of our district. Our elementary schools, especially K-2, are busting at the seams. We're excited about that growth, but we need to, again, have a plan for that growth, that is to expand possibly into our preschool building as another elementary school. And in order to do that, we need to be proactive and begin to have those conversations about expansion. We also, like Buncombe County Schools, are looking at our one-to-one initiative. We are, we have one at the high school right now in Silsa. We are attempting to expand to the middle school. Not only do we have curriculum needs and content needs and up-to-date opportunities, we also have testing that will be a requirement and will be a requirement on a device. And so, the only way to take care of end-of-grade and end-of-course testing is to have the device for all students. And so, we're working on our plan and our strategic plan to ensure that every student has an opportunity to utilize that device during the school year, so that test day is not a surprise. And so, again, very important expansion opportunities there. We also, as I indicated, are looking at that mental health component of our curriculum to ensure that we are addressing the needs of the whole child. And so, a lot of this information and our funding will be directly related to our new strategic plan that we, our Board of Education will vote on on June 15th, and we will roll out officially on August 17th at UNC Asheville. So, we invite you to see that presentation and to be a part of the conversation when it comes to the shift and change at Asheville City Schools. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Baldwin. Any questions? Now, we will have a public hearing on June the 2nd. Any questions at this point?
So, just one clarification. So, in terms of the, hey, by the way.
Hey.
So, in terms of the early childhood program piece, you indicated that it's already going on at Hall Fletcher.
Yes, ma'am. So, we are working to write a grant as one of the funding sources. We're also utilizing our foundation, as well as local funding.
Gotcha. So, this, so this request would be, would it kind of help with that room?
That, yes, ma'am. That request is for, actually, to begin the expansion, starting with Hall Fletcher. That's correct.
Gotcha. See, that's the part I don't understand. So, if you're already in Hall Fletcher, but we are expanding to Hall Fletcher, maybe I'm...
We are not in Hall Fletcher yet. We are, we have 18 students signed up for the 2015-16 school year.
I see. I see. You're going, now I'm with the program.
So, expand it to other classrooms.
Locations, correct. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I got you. I'm sorry, I wasn't tracking.
That's okay.
And I just wanted to say, it's not related exactly to this presentation, except for that, seeing that picture of the high school, is that I was so excited to read about the prom.
Yes.
And that, you know, it happened at the school, which is completely old-school. To actually go to a prom at your school. But, and, and just, I mean, I've heard a couple of different numbers, but, I mean, I heard like last year, maybe 100 students were in attendance, and the tickets were very expensive. And then, this year, there was like 400.
That is correct. I attended the prom as well. I was one of those 400 people. And we're a little over 100 last year and a little over 400 this year, partly due to, I think, that because the students really had buy-in. They created everything, as far as decorations and food, and they could afford to attend.
Yeah, that's great. And because, one of the students quoted in the paper, some people just stopping in and looking at the high school and really reminding the students how beautiful and how unique this building is. So, I'm very supportive of finding ways that y'all can be proactive to that.
Right. Thank you.
Great. Good. Any comments or questions? Dr. Baldwin, we're awfully glad to have you here.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Dr. Dennis King about the AB Tech budget.
Good evening to everybody. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Dennis Baldwin.
Kind of left out.
Dr. Dennis Baldwin. I'd like to start by saying this. Of all the agencies that you will fund this year, none will give you a better return on your investment than AB Tech. I want to start by talking about graduation, because I think that speaks to what I'm talking about here. On Saturday, the 16th, we produced 615 degrees and diplomas. These are people who are going into the workforce and our measure right now is that approximately 90% of that number will remain here in Buncombe County to work. 78 nurses, 14 automobile technicians, 12 bakers, 14 brewers, four machinists. I'm sorry to say, we couldn't turn out more machinists this year. We need machinists in Buncombe County. 11 cosmetologists, 20 chefs, 13 dental hygienists, 15 emergency medical personnel. All of those individuals undoubtedly will end up working here in Buncombe County. Nine medical assistants, 15 medical lab technicians, eight sonographers, 11 pharmacy techs, eight radiographers, seven surge techs, 11 webmasters, and four welders out of that 615 students. In the fall, we turned out 212 college graduates. And at the end of this summer, we will turn out 123 certificate holders. A certificate is a very quick document that gives a student three, four courses, so that he can go and get a job. All total, this academic year, we will turn out 950 credentials for people working in this county. But numbers don't say as much as people do. So, I'd like to ask you to turn in your graduation exercises document that is in your folder. Please pass over page 1, where you see... No, don't pass over it. I'm awfully proud of the fact that we have an honorary degree given to Mike Fryer at graduation. Some of you were there to share with him, but we're awfully proud that Mike is now an official graduate of AB Tech. If I can ask you to turn to page 7, you will find Stella Galyon there. Let me tell you about Stella. Stella was the child of two drug-addict parents. She dropped out of school in the 6th grade. She was married at the age of 13, and by 20, she had five children. She was in an abusive marriage that she got out of. And at one point, one of those children said to her mom, "Will you graduate from high school before I do?" And so, she came to AB Tech and got a GED. Stella did so well in her GED program that she decided that she would go into the college transfer degree program there. She became the president of our National Honor Society, Phi Theta Kappa. And at graduation this year, she was recognized with the Dallas Herring Award. Now, the Dallas Herring Award in the community college system is that one outstanding student in the state. Stella was number one out of 800,000 community college students. On page 4, you see Jerry Moncas. And Jerry's got a great quote in there that I hope you'll appreciate. He says, "My goal is to help older people understand and become comfortable and confident with technology and how it can be used to improve their lives." He's a computer information technologist, and I'm looking to hire Jerry for a position that we have vacant at the college right now. On page 9, you see another friend of mine, Terrence Brown. Terrence told me that school was always a challenge for him. No one thought he was ever going to make anything with his life. And he's finished at AB Tech, spending a couple semesters on the dean's list and one on the president's list. He's got autism. These are all individuals who have graduated from your, and I underline that word, your community college. What you're funding for AB Tech is futures for individuals, opportunities for individuals, economic development for this county, and you're making taxpayers, not societal burdens. So, I return to what I was talking about in the beginning. This is the way that you can get an excellent return on your investment. Let's look at a little, our numbers there on the documents that I've given you. And I do apologize for not bringing a slideshow. I didn't realize that I was going to have to do that, and I promise to do it in the future. This year, we worked on a county budget of $8.3 million. You gave us $6 million and you asked us to use our fund balance, which we did, of $2 million. So, in the end, we worked with a budget of $8.3 million this year from the county or individual college sources. For repairs and renovations, this year, we had $716,000 from the county and a little bit under $100,000 from our appropriated fund balance. We're spending that right now on various projects around the campus. The next slide you'll see is one that I think is quite telling. It shows how you funded us for the last 10 years. And you can see that we did remarkably well with the county up until '13-'14, when, again, we dipped into our fund balance to fill and complete our offerings for the college. This year, we're asking, again, that that $2 million be reinstated, so that we can serve with the kinds of service that we have in the past. Somebody asked me a while ago, "Well, what will happen if you don't get that $2 million?" First of all, our maintenance staff at the college is funded by the county exclusively, and so, we would have to make drastic cuts in our maintenance department. Secondly, our police force. And I'm awfully proud of the fact that within the last five years, we have gone from having a security force to a sworn police department. You all, we all know how important security on college campuses is these days, and we have gone to a sworn police force now. We will have to cut back on our police force. We have 24/7 coverage on the Victoria Road campus, on the Enka campus, and that would have to be cut back if we are not funded the way we have asked for. So, those are two areas where we would have to cut back. We have a supplement, a long-term, a long-time supplement, given by this board to the college, and that supplement would be in jeopardy also if we were not funded the way we have talked about. So, for '15-'16, you will see that we are asking for $8.7 million in recurring funds. There is an increase in there of $378,000 for maintenance. And that is principally maintenance on small, small project maintenance and the increase in utilities, which will be necessary for the three new buildings, which are coming online. Even the 650-car parking garage that we are building right now has an elevator in it, and there will be a $25,000 a year contract for the maintenance of that elevator. So, all of those costs, which are involved in the three new buildings, have been built into that increase. We're also asking for $1.4 million for repairs and renovations, and you'll see on the next slide how we intend to use that. I'll just point out a couple things. The 120-year-old Sunny Crest building, the front of that building is literally rotten and must be replaced because of age. That's only one of the projects that will be worked on with the major renovations. You see a summary document there that will show you our request for this year. And at the bottom, you'll see some of the numbers that I just alluded to. The cost of electricity on the new Allied Health Building that we're building is approximately $582,000 a year. The multipurpose building, the cost there will be someplace between 75 and 100,000. We can get all that out of this budget if we get funded at the way that we have been in the past. And the last document in here is a document that will show you, item by item, the small maintenance projects that we... maintenance projects that we have put together for the fifteen sixteen year. That's that number of one-point-oh-four million dollars of small maintenance projects, repairs and renovations. But then we've also pointed out what we would be doing over the next nine years, I believe it is, on repairs and renovations. We finished a master facilities plan a short while ago, and we have... Rhonda, I think you have copies of that. By the way, I neglected to introduce you to Rhonda Devan, who is our chief finance officer at the college, our vice president for finance. If you can pass those out. You don't have them? Okay. Oh, I know where they are. That's why you don't have them. There you go. On the master facilities plan, this was about a ninety-page document, but I extrapolated one page here, which is the top priorities for construction at the college. The top priority is renovation of the rhododendron building. Presently, rhododendron is that building where all the medical programs are. And in December, those medical programs will be moving to the new Allied Health Building. Rhododendron will then be renovated for engineering programs, and on the ground floor, we'll put in a cosmetology program, which we presently have, and a barber school. Presently, if anybody wants to become a barber in western North Carolina, they have to go to Winston-Salem. And so we want to put in a barber school, and that has to be... that would be in priority one. The next one would be the renovation of the Elm Building. It's a building that has about a thirty-year-old heating and air conditioning system that we are band-aiding together. We will renovate that as another part of that. Then we are looking for a second egress, access egress to campus. All you have to do is, as I referred to a while ago when I talked about policing, know that there are, at any given time, approximately five-thousand people on our campus. And if they have to move out of there quickly because of an emergency, we can't do it on the two-lane Victoria Road. So we are looking for another access from campus. That would be another project in priority one. And the last project would be the purchase and renovation, ideally renovation, of a south campus for us. We would like to get into South County where the growth is going, and we believe we have a site out there that we're interested in. With that said, I'll take your questions.
Thank you, Dr. King. Any questions?
Yeah, this is around that last part, just to clarify. So this last piece that you passed, that's... it's called the master plan. That's with the sales tax, right? Is that what the sales tax is?
That would be correct. Yes, yes.
Right. So tell me again about the south campus piece of this?
Well, we need a place in the south campus. I'm sorry, in the south county. Presently, we are renting from Mars Hill University, and we have a very amicable relationship with them. We're on Tunnel... beg your pardon, on Airport Road. And the building is fine, but it's just too small for both our purposes and theirs. They've agreed to let us stay there for a number of years, but eventually, they want the entire building themselves, and we would like a presence out in South County. We just started an aviation program, and we're amazed. I never thought... I never thought when we put this aviation program in place, there was going to be the interest that there is. Right now, for the fall semester, we have thirty-five students who are either already signed up or interested in signing up in aviation. We want that program out in South County so it can be near the airport. And the good thing is, the state has... the State Board of Community Colleges will give a little over half a million dollars to a campus. Now, their definition of a campus is that there must be at least one full and complete academic program there so that everything can be taken on that campus. And if we move the aviation program there, including their general education, math and English and reading and everything else, all the other classes that go with the program to the south campus, we will automatically get a little over five-hundred-thousand dollars for doing that. We, by the way, are applying for the same campus status for the Woodfin facility because we have total programs out there, and I believe within a year, we'll have state funding for the Woodfin property.
So these line items under south campus are the idea that you're going to build, well, three new buildings and the replacement of the Haynes Building?
I'm not sure that we're going to get to that anytime soon.
But my question is, that facet of the master plan is just about the south campus?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. King.
I was going to ask a question.
One more question?
Please.
Yes, sir. One more question, Commissioner Friar.
I know I'm part of the trustees, but the one question I have is...
That was not why we gave you the degree.
I know. When we had this group of people come back with a plan, the budget had already been predicted for ninety Victoria Road, Allied Health, and actually rhododendron, and the money's for the taxes. And, you know, we need to, before we look at this issue of twelve million for rhododendron, that number is way, way out of respect. So I would respectfully ask that the school, at the particular time, pull these numbers.
Yeah. I agree. When... I was kind of shocked at some of the numbers that the architects put in for these projects, both construction and renovation. Of course, the further the plan went out into priorities three, four, five, the less likely they could predict, because I honestly feel that those buildings won't be built anytime soon. The ones we're talking about are those that are in this list of priority one. And even at that, I do agree with you. I think the numbers are high. There is no reason why it needs to cost us that much to renovate rhododendron or Elm.
You know, even rhododendron shows here, soft money, two-point-seven million dollars. On the actual build-out, the cost was three million dollars. Allied Healthcare was supposed to cost fifty-four million, and we pulled that down, I think, somewhere around thirty-nine and added the parking deck and stuff. So, you know, I just... I like to look at figures, Dr. King. But these numbers that were brought to us that we paid for somebody to do, I mean, you know, they look at Enka Campus. We were going to spend three and three in and out. They've got it at sixteen million dollars. Rhododendron, we're going to spend three to revamp rhododendron. They got it at twelve-point-four million. Elm was going to spend eight million on it. They got it at seventeen-point-three. So, you know, let's get back into reality. The big number come out here, you know, ninety-eight million dollars, and I haven't added up all of them. The lights, you know, even Victoria Road, you know, the two-point-four. If you add them all up, it only comes to eighty-three million dollars to refix everything we got. And that stays within the budget that the school asked for originally from the taxpayers on the quarter cent sales tax. So, you know, I would personally, as a commissioner, appreciate this project cost still be thrown out and go back to the original one that we were asked to for originally.
Well, I can't agree with you more. I think that the cost of the projects that the architects put on the master facilities plan is a bit high, absolutely. And we can definitely go back to the other numbers.
I have some more questions.
Okay, more questions?
So how will this... So like, I'm sure y'all kind of started digging down in the House budget too last night. So tell me how the state allocation interfaces... I know the county has certain responsibilities, like, okay, this is our part of the deal. This is your part of the deal. So is it kind of irrelevant what the state does as it relates to what we do or because of this differentiation of responsibilities? Anyway, so give me the highlights for what's coming from the state.
The county's responsibility is the physical plant and everything that is affiliated with the physical plant, the personnel costs affiliated with that. And that's why I mentioned those two groups, our police force and our maintenance people. Those are the principal costs that the county has to bear for the college. Everything else is paid for either by the state or by grants and things of that nature.
Gotcha. And so what's your... what's the prognosis for your state allocation for the instruction and whatnot?
Well, it's going to be down. The governor's budget, which was put out about two months ago, did not even have, for the fifth year in a row, a raise for our employees. We learned just yesterday that the House budget does have a two percent raise for everybody in it. I think our budget will be down again next year. I hope by adding programs to the curriculum of the college that we can lift up our enrollment a little bit, because in reality, our funding is based on enrollment. And so the more students we teach, the more funding we get, and that's why we're adding programs. It's tricky because the first year a program is open, you get no funding for it. Funding comes the following year. And so everything has to be run on the budget of the college for the first year. So the programs that we've put in place this year, every one of them, including that aviation program, are being taught by existing personnel. We do have a US Air pilot, retired US Air pilot, who's going to be the principal instructor in the aviation program. Everything else that's been put in place has been put there without faculty.
I gotcha. Perhaps my last question. I don't want to box myself in, though. In terms of the public safety facility that we got up and running, and I hear that it's booming with attendees and participants. Now, is that helping in terms of kind of your enrollment figures? Is that kind of an example of a program that is bringing in more revenue for y'all?
Absolutely. We... in fact, we are able now to do many things that we couldn't do in the past out there because we didn't have the facility for it. We are working with other counties who bring people in for that, to use the facility. Yes, it's been a real boom for us, and we appreciate it greatly. Great facility.
I'd be curious, you know, offline, to... if you had some back-of-the-envelope numbers of the increase for tuition, enrollment, whatnot, you know, kind of before and after the facility or before and now, because I know we're doing great right now. I'd just be curious. Doesn't impact any of this. I just... something I'd like to know. Because that was part of our hope, right, is that in addition to having the great training opportunities for our people that keep us safe in the community, but that it would be also a way that it would kind of bolster y'all as well.
And I think it's going to... it is doing that presently. Interestingly enough, you mentioned a moment ago tuition. We don't get to keep tuition. Tuition is set by the General Assembly, and every penny of tuition that we collect is sent off to Raleigh. So we just get funded by how many students we are teaching. They send us back money for that purpose. But tuition, that's why we don't get a chance to set our own tuition rate, because it's set for the state.
I gotcha. I gotcha.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. King. Next, we're going to hear from District Attorney Todd Williams. Mr. Williams, thank you for being here.
Thank you all. It is my honor and privilege to appear before you all, and I thank you for your willingness to add our matters to the agenda. It is the District Attorney's, the Office of District Attorney's, request to the County Commission. However, we feel very strongly that these matters really aren't about us. They're about service to victims and to facilitate the economical delivery of justice here in Buncombe County. Let me just inquire. I believe, has this funding request been supplied to the commission? The items that we've enumerated here on this funding request are sort of broken into two categories. And I guess I'd like to unpack that for you and perhaps just add that, let's call it two-point-one categories. We have a domestic violence initiative, and we are here before you to ask your consideration in regard to what we call a jail population management program. Now, I'd like to address the jail population management program first, because I hope it will be a most immediate benefit, I guess ascertainable benefit to the County Commission in terms of a... it is our contention that the jail population management program saves the county money and has done so since two thousand and seven. The term of art used earlier tonight was weeds, I believe. I don't want to get too deep into the weeds, but however I do, just shout weeds, and I'll do my best to steer clear of weeds. What the jail population management program is designed to do is to expedite felony prosecutions in district court. Up until two thousand and seven or before two thousand and seven, all felony pleas in Buncombe County occurred in Superior Court. Our felony sentencing structure includes felonies from Class A all the way down to Class I. The General Assembly has authorized district court felony pleas for Class H and I felonies. Those are low-level felonies. A Class A felony is a first-degree murder. A Class B is either a second-degree murder or sexual assault of a serious nature. Class I felonies are possession of drugs, false pretenses, actually, that's a Class H, low-level property crimes, matters that generally don't involve acts of violence, in other words. The district court felony program has saved the county since two thousand and seven millions of dollars. Major Madiabas is here in this room and some of the number... in the very back of the room, and he is our, I guess, custodian of Buncombe County Detention Facility. He is over that facility. And some of the numbers I'm going to present to the commission come from Major Madiabas. According to him, the daily cost to house an inmate in Buncombe County is one-hundred-and-seven dollars. Now, when a case is charged, a felony case is brought to Buncombe County Court, what happened prior to two thousand and seven is the case starts in district court. It usually sits there until discovery is completed in the matter. Once discovery is completed, a probable cause hearing is either had or probable cause is waived. The case is transferred to Superior Court. That usually takes a month or two. The case is then continued another month for the case to be indicted, because you need an indictment, which is a charging document, which triggers jurisdiction in Superior Court. The case lays over for one month, sits sort of in the custody of the clerk, and it's pretty much off the calendar for a month. It's indicted. It then has an administrative hearing where a plea offer or a trial date is set, which takes another thirty days. So you can see that those one-hundred-and-seven-dollar periods are accruing constantly without the district court felony plea program. The general statutes, as I mentioned, authorize felony pleas in district court for Class H and I felonies. Since two thousand and seven, my predecessor essentially got consent, the consent of the district court bench, to allow felony pleas in district court. Since then, using the jails' numbers, we estimate that Class H and I felonies have been pled on average about seventy days quicker than they were prior to that, the institution of this program, which has resulted in a savings of about one-point-one million dollars per annum since two thousand and seven. since 2007. So what we have had by way of county support since then, and these numbers are the full contractual, I guess, numbers, these aren't actually salaries. These include all administrative HR benefits, everything AOC actually demands to be placed into a contract. For instance, the district court felony plea investigator, we've asked for $68,043. That number is what would go into a contract with AOC. The county is authorized, per Chapter 7A of the general statutes, to contract with AOC. In addition to that, we've had two victim-witness legal assistant positions, in addition to the investigator position, which provides litigation support to do what we need to achieve the felony plea in district court. What we need to get it done in district court, and as I've told others, there's no point in doing this if we're not going to do it entirely correctly. We need, because we're not going to get an indictment, we need information. And information is a document which essentially waives, waives the appearance before a grand jury, it waives the submission of the charge to a grand jury, and allows the case, permits the case with the consent of the defendant to proceed in district court. We need the information. We need a full accounting of the restitution on behalf of victims, so that if they're sentenced to probation, we know with precision what amount is to be ordered by a district court judge for restitution purposes. We need sentencing worksheets. All that must be completed. It is labor-intensive. The ADA who's in that courtroom, who's calling the calendar, who's managing, you know, the hearings before the court, dealing with defense attorneys and judges, simply does not have the time to put all that paperwork together. So that's why these positions have been funded by the county since 2007. So that piece of our funding request, we hope the county would see the immediate benefit there. We reduced, I believe, the jail population from approaching 700 on occasion in 2007 or prior to that, and it's somewhere down, I believe, in the 400, mid-400 range at present. So we hope to continue with that program. Now, in regard to our domestic violence request, what the District Attorney's Office is asking the county to very strongly consider in behalf of victims. The county has rightfully identified domestic violence as a very key concern. If you go to the Enough Campaign webpage on Buncombe County.org, the county has represented that domestic violence is the leading cause of injury and the seventh-leading cause of death for women in the United States. It is the number-one reason women and children become homeless in the United States. It's a very high source of toxic stress. One in four women will report violence at the hands of an intimate partner at some point in their lifetime. Approximately 1/3 of female victims of homicide were killed by their former, the current or former husbands or boyfriends. 54% of employees living with domestic violence miss at least three full days of work per month. Child's exposure to their father abusing their mother is the strongest risk factor for transmitting violent behavior from one generation to the next. Domestic violence costs our community over $6.7 million a year. The Enough Campaign has identified six best practices, which the District Attorney's Office will fully support. We are now in the implementation phase of the Enough Campaign. Among those programs are the cross-system dialogue, a lethality assessment program, which will assist us in gathering intelligence about the risk to victims, a focused deterrence piece, which will identify abusers at an early stage, and deliver a message, a strong message of deterrence to them, an electronic monitoring program, which is intended to limit contact by abusers and their victims, a high-risk team, which will facilitate a cross-system dialogue between our very rich nonprofit partners, law enforcement, and the District Attorney's Office, and of course, the public information campaign, which has obviously been very, very successful. In addition to all of these things, the county has also endeavored to create a family justice center, which will house all these resources in close proximity to the courthouse. We feel in the District Attorney's Office that right now, if you were to visit Domestic Violence, our weekly setting on Wednesday, you'll see one assistant district attorney, one victim-witness legal assistant in that courtroom. And it's a courtroom that is just, frankly, it's sort of a miasma of stress, and it's almost like an emergency room. It's like a triage situation. What we would like to do is we would like to increase the level of support to victims in that courtroom. A big problem in bringing these cases to, you know, prosecuting these cases, is victims, we feel, we feel victims feel unsupported. And if you look at our calendars in district court and domestic violence court, the chief cause of dismissals is the prosecuting witnesses just simply aren't showing up. We feel that with increased supports from the county in terms of, we have asked for in this, in our request, we will be able to put an additional prosecutor in that courtroom, so we'll have two prosecutors in that courtroom. While a case is being tried, another prosecutor can prepare the next case for trial, can be interviewing a witness or a victim in preparation of that next case. We would also like to add an additional victim-witness legal assistant. That will give us two in that courtroom. And a dedicated domestic violence investigator for litigation support. We feel that these positions in district court will have a huge impact in reducing the toxic stress I've mentioned, adverse childhood experiences, homicide for victims of domestic violence over the long term. So it's our hope that the county will, in the implementation phase of the Enough Campaign, will fund these positions. The Family Justice Center is a very exciting opportunity for our office. In support of our request, we have April Burgess Johnson here tonight from HelpMate. We forged, I believe, a good relationship with HelpMate and Our Voice and other advocates for victims here in Buncombe County. We would like, I actually haven't seen the footprint or the architectural design for how the Family Justice Center will be laid out. We would like to, however, depending upon space allocations and what's available, we would like to have an attorney, investigator, and victim-witness legal assistant in that building, if at all possible, so that the cross-system dialogue will be facilitated, that this is what the Enough Campaign has identified as a best practice, so that we can have boots on the ground in the Family Justice Center, ready and able with ears open, to hear the message from victims on a daily basis, to steepen that cultural milieu of victim services, so that when a victim needs walking across the street for a court date, she feels supported and is able to get there, feels entirely supported. I believe a component is that there will be some childcare facilities or other facilities made available to support victims as well. We want there to be no impediment to justice for victims of domestic violence. The last piece of our, what I'm calling, domestic violence trial unit, is the homicide, serious felony prosecutor. We would like to bring somebody in from, with particularized experience in another jurisdiction here in North Carolina perhaps, or elsewhere, that has serious homicide, serious felony, domestic violence experience, that understands the difficulties, the pitfalls, the pitfalls of working with domestic violence victims who have suffered a particularized form of trauma that sometimes can make working with them, these victims, challenging. And should it be authorized, this individual would be the leader of the domestic violence trial unit. So the Enough Campaign has identified these best practices. Now that we're in the implementation phase, it's our contention that we need these positions, and the county really needs our advocacy in the courthouse. The county has invested, has already made a prior investment in electronic monitors. You need assistant district attorneys in the courthouse to get them ordered, to ensure that they're used for the worst cases, for the worst abusers, to identify how we best use those resources. We want to lead the high-risk team. We will have a team in place should the county fund our domestic violence trial unit. We want to ensure that all these best practices are complied with and enforced under our direction and are done lawfully. So we, it is our hope that with all these supports, with the Family Justice Center, should the county fund our domestic violence trial unit, we will reduce the rates of dismissal for domestic violence cases, we'll reduce toxic stress in Buncombe County, we'll have better outcomes for victims, and we're asking for your serious consideration. The last piece that we have enumerated in our budget request is the, I believe it's listed as Dedicated County Benefits Fraud Prosecutor. And in a sense, if I may characterize that as a catch-all, and in all candidness, and I hope I'm not getting in trouble, we want to support the fraud benefits prosecutor. We aren't, at this time, entirely convinced, or we don't know that the numbers are present to justify a full-time position for that purpose. However, the county has funded Veterans Treatment Court, Drug Treatment Court, and other specialty courts, including Sobriety Court. We would ask the county to consider funding that additional prosecutor to work as a fraud benefits prosecutor and specialized treatment court prosecutor, sort of an omnibus position. So in that the county has already funded, provided additional support for treatment courts, we're asking the County Commission to consider that position as well. In a nutshell, that is my, that's my presentation. It has been a long day. I have been at the city's search for a chief, and I will make myself available for your questions at this time.
Any questions, Mr. Williams?
I have maybe one question. So you're asking the county to fund a number of additional prosecutors, but that's continued funding? We're already funding these same positions, is that right?
The prosecutors, no. If you go to the bottom of the page, the jail diversion, felony plea investigator, victim-witness legal assistant, and the victim-witness legal assistant for the informations, those matters, I believe, have been funded since 2007.
Okay. Okay, but not the prosecutors?
That's correct.
Can you say that again? I apologize. Can you say that again, please?
If you have this document in front of you.
I do.
Commissioner Belcher, if you go to the bottom half, under total domestic violence, these numbers here have been funded since 2007. So I believe that number is 192,983.
Okay. So how are prosecutors funded if not by the county?
Prosecutors are funded by the state. Now, Chapter 7A of the general statutes authorize local municipal governments to enter into contracts with the administrative office of the courts.
Okay. Have you sought funding from the state for these positions?
We have not. That funding comes through the General Assembly, and I don't know that we can.
Okay.
Because it's a caseload, it's a caseload calculus that goes into, you know, how many cases come through jurisdiction, and the state uses a multiplier to identify how many prosecutors are authorized. I will say that comparable counties, such as Forsyth County, has contracted with AOC to set up a domestic violence trial unit. I believe their number, the most recent figures I had was 2010 or '11. I believe that number was close to 400,000. With Forsyth, Mecklenburg County, again, the most recent number was 2011 or '12, was supporting its district attorney's office to, I believe, the tune of about $5 million. So we hope that this is, that the commission will look at this as a reasonable request. If Mecklenburg County, which is about four times the size of Buncombe County in terms of raw population, funds to the tune of five-plus million, we would ask the County Commission to consider this as a reasonable request.
So just looking at this, what we have, it says total domestic violence, 461,594, but the fraud prosecutor is lumped in that.
Yes, and, you know, I have to admit that, that may, that's why I sort of wanted to point that out to y'all, that it may have been better to move that to the bottom, sort of separate that out. But the county has, for several years now, I don't know with precision how many years Drug Treatment Court has been funded by the county. I believe Veterans Treatment Court, which we're getting off the ground now, is also dependent on county largesse, county generosity. We do have courts that we could address the county's issues in regard to benefits fraud and utilize that prosecutor in other ways as well. That would address county issues.
I just didn't want someone to look at this in a glance and think it was almost a half a million more for domestic violence.
Right. Well, it goes back to the same thing. I think Mandy and her group, aren't you looking at this and haven't you? Originally, there was some funding set aside for this through DSS. I thought that we'd talked about that before.
The fraud benefit prosecutor was funded through DSS and is eligible for reimbursement. I think when we funded it, and Mr. Williams and I have talked about it, we, along with Mecklenburg and two other counties, were supposed to be part of federal pilot to focus on retailer fraud, and that has not yet gotten off the ground. But more recent discussion that Mr. Williams and I've had is that we do But more recent discussion that Mr. Williams and I have had is that we do fund those specialty courts, and they're numerous, and that you would be dedicating more prosecutor time to DV court by virtue of us taking a portion of that position and having it support all of those specialty courts. We fund Drug Court, Family Drug Court, Parts of Nuisance Court, Veterans Court, DUI Court, I might have forgotten one, Jim, Admin Courts, and then...
And that actually is an excellent argument that I should have incorporated in my presentation in that every specialty court, well, we're addressing defendants' needs in the hope that they can be restored to, you know, lawful compliance, to be good citizens, to get a monkey off their back if it's drugs, to, you know, in terms of Veterans Treatment Court, to get the supports that they need through the VA so that if they have PTSD or traumatic brain injury, or whatever, they're medicated, they're compliant with their treatment, and they're not going to be, you know, a grave danger to society to be out on the streets. Folks with those kinds of brain injuries or stresses can be dangerous. So we can rededicate more experienced prosecutors to addressing, you know, victims' needs in other serious cases by having a dedicated specialty courts prosecutor. And hopefully, we can build up, well, as needed, the docket for a benefits fraud prosecutor so that that will become a full-time position.
And as Mr. Williams noted with jail diversion, we do measure return on investments for all of those specialty courts in addition to jail diversion, and he's correct, that they do show that we're reinvesting savings that we'd otherwise be spending through projected jail growth, population growth. That's correct.
But on the jail growth, the numbers that I've heard from the jail tonight, I thought we stayed around the 4 to 450, and the most we can hold somewhere around 650. So we're saying that we've got a jail that's full and not too many people, because you put a number out there around 700. So Mr. Madiabas can, or somebody can tell me how many our jail holds over here? Because we stayed, the numbers that I've heard through the processes, the diversion and getting them out through the DA before him, that we tried to keep them moving out of the jail as quick as possible if, you know, if they weren't that bad a criminals. And that way, it was saving the county money. The numbers for the bed, I've heard that we sell beds to the feds for like $78 a day. Well, it was 78, and they used to be selling beds to the other counties for like $50 a day. So the numbers that I'm hearing are not coming close. You're talking, what was the number that you brought to me, Mr. Williams, there just a minute ago?
In regard to the daily cost?
Yeah, a hundred and some dollars.
A hundred and seven is my understanding.
That's correct, a hundred and seven.
But how are we selling beds to other counties for cheaper than that?
Why don't you come on up, come on up and put public in here.
One of the things I would point out, whether, whatever the number is, 100 or 107, that includes both fixed and variable costs. You don't save the fixed cost. I mean, we've invested in the structure, so you have to separate that to know what the savings is between fixed and variable.
But it goes back to, the only thing that I'm trying to say is, the numbers that I'm hearing are bigger than what we've actually seen in the facilities and, you know, the beds that are sold.
So Major, do you have the numbers?
Yeah, so the rate of capacity is 604. The population today is 388. And so as far as with that, it is $100 per day as far as for the federal inmates that we have, which is that additional revenue, and that's because we have the additional bed space to offset the overall cost for the management of the jail.
I understand how you worked your deal with the feds, and it's safe, since I've heard about it, you've got a new contract. So that's, you know, but I do understand that. But you do sell to other counties cheaper than that, don't you?
That is correct, as far as for that, with the space in there. Generally, what they look is what the cost is in western North Carolina. So for example, ours is $55 per day. As a part of that, when you take a look at the statewide misdemeanor program, what the state pays you is only $40 per day. So again, what we do is, depending on the space, working with the agreement, to certainly go ahead and get the best return back on the revenue so it goes back to the county, to certainly go ahead and...
The only thing I'm trying to say is, is we're hearing numbers, and I just, I like factual numbers. That's all I care about.
Well, I mean, I didn't hear anything, just to interject around this, I mean, the fact that something costs something, it costs that, and what you can get in return, that, you know, you hope you cover your costs, but it sounds like that we're getting the best deal we can from here to here. So just the fact that those numbers are different, to me, does not indicate that there's any error in presentation. So jail cost us $107 per person per night. We're able to work with the feds and get $100. That's a pretty darn good deal. We have to absorb the $7 difference. He works as hard as he can with these other entities to kind of market our place so we're competitive and get what we can to fill up that space. It might be $65, it might be 78. I don't hear those numbers being differentiated, translating into that that is some type of incorrect number. I mean, I hear it very differently. So I don't, I'd rather us just listen to these numbers. If we've got questions, we can off them offline. I don't want to, I don't want to put our presenters in some awkward position that this doesn't seem very fair to, so.
All right. Any other questions? We'll have a public hearing on this and all the parts of the budget.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Next meeting. Thank you. Thank you, Major. Next, we'll hear from Dr. Green about our county budget. Is it a pleasure, the board, take a five-minute break?
Two minutes. Two or five, I don't care.
Let's take a five-minute break.
Thank you.
We'll start back at 16 after.